Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting for the Laporte County Commissioners for Wednesday, May 15, 2019. If you'll all rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, please.
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Morzinski. Do you have a form?
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion for the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I think there are two other items to be added. One was about the change of our meeting date for July, the first meeting, and the other one was for the Adult Protective Services.
So, Mr. President, I would move that we would add to the agenda, under Old Business, Adult Protective Services, requesting permission to change the dollar amount for the purchasing of a vehicle from Enterprise. It's a small change, but it needs to be corrected on the record. And then we want to also add, under New Business, a change to our meeting schedule for July.
I'll second it. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider approval of the minutes from May 1st.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Consideration of claims.
We have payroll ending May 8, 2019, $1,207,615.42. And miscellaneous claims, $1,090,928.66.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the claims and payroll.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment?
So, just to be clear, under public comment, this is the time of the meeting where we take comment on things that are not motions and resolutions on the agenda. So, anyone that has anything they want to share, this is a good time to do so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Cheyhoin. I live at 3516 West Small Court, Laporte. I was the Democratic Party member of the absentee voting board for the municipal primary that was just concluded. The reason I want to speak here tonight is because, at the last meeting, Rodney McCormick brought up something that I want to correct. I want to inform the public, and you, if you don't already know, of one of his assertions. And that was that ballots be mailed to him because here's a blank ABS mail form for people requesting absentee ballots by mail. And on number two, it says, "Please mail the absentee ballot for the election to me at this address." So, it sounds innocent enough, mail the ad, you know, and he said, and it was his address that was put there. But we know on the absentee voting board that the ballot is meant to go to the voter. All right? So, it can't, unless they're living there, it's not to be mailed there. Okay? The way he reads it, you know, it sounds innocent enough, mail it to me, and the voter's actually asked, you know, "Ronnie, you know, I want my ballot to go to your address." But there's even a Indiana code, and I want to read it out, that it's Title III, Article 14, Chapter 2, Section 16, Subsection 10. And this, a person who knowingly would do this commits a Level 6 felony. All right? You're not allowed to possess an unmarked absentee ballot on or before the date of the election for which the absentee ballot has been printed unless the person has authorized it to possess it. And it goes on to list, well, the printer can possess it, election board people such as myself are allowed to, the mail service, the actual voter, a household family member, or somebody that has the power of attorney, attorney in fact. So, that's why I'm here to say that a third party is not allowed to get an unvoted ballot. And I don't see this as voter discrimination or suppression. And that would go towards Ron Mear or Duane Perry or anybody else, any candidate, any supporting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to comment?
Hello, my name is John Gallop. I'm the warden for Department of Corrections, specifically Female Juvenile Facility here in Laporte. Last week, we had Corrections Week where we support the staff, encourage people to come in, talk to the girls, open our facility. Just wanted to take a quick second. Ms. Sheila Mathis came to our facility. She welcomed our facility, she talked to the staff, and met the girls. The girls are a little shy asking questions, but I just wanted to take time to come on in and say thank you. We appreciate it. I do have a little facility coin that I like to give her in token of our appreciation, if it's okay.
Please do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That was very nice.
Well, I have to say, the Laporte Juvenile Correctional Facility is in our community. It's kind of a place you often don't notice, but a really impressive operation. Generally, correctional facilities are very doom and gloom, maybe because it was filled with young ladies and the staff that take care of them, but it was a really impressive, you run a really great facility. And certainly, if there's any volunteers in the community that want to help these young ladies get their lives back on track and use that time to nurture human beings, it's a great place to volunteer and offer your help. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Another comment I wanted to make was, one of the things that we have talked about quite a bit is about mental health issues. And both of us are very, very serious about doing the right things to make sure that we give the kind of support they need from the mental health standpoint to make sure that they can turn their lives around.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
My name's Gene Yarkey. I'm Vice President of Operations for Reith Riley Construction, and I'm here to answer concerns that have arisen about the 2019 paving program. I have some documentation that I could approach and hand you copies.
Thank you. You know, what I would like for you to do is, if you can quickly summarize to us what issues have come up in relationship to INDOT and then what you're trying to do to help mitigate those problems.
Okay. I do want to start by saying that I've been with Reith Riley since 1987, and we've always maintained good standing with INDOT and with the county for that matter. And we've worked almost every single year for Laporte County and never had difficulties like this. Back in March of this year, we had an INDOT audit of our lab at Laporte. The audit did not go well. There was, there were several instances of missing documentation, poor diary record-keeping. So, as the mixtures are produced, the test results vary. When the test results vary enough, there has to be action taken, but that action needs to be documented, and in some cases, the action was not documented. So, that was the reason for the poor audit. At this point, the Laporte lab is suspended from running INDOT mix until such time as the suspension is relieved or lifted. And that could be sometime this summer, but right now, it may be as late as January of 2000. So, as I say, we've run mix for many years, or a number of years where we received awards from INDOT for excellent record-keeping in the lab and work in cooperation in the lab. This year was not one of those years. We do have 10 other plants in Indiana that are in good standing, that are still maintain their certification with INDOT. And we can do any kind of work for INDOT with any of our people in any of the areas, but at this, at this time, we cannot run hot mix for INDOT projects.
Did you have any other plants in the last five years of the many that you mentioned that have had similar issues?
We've had some audit issues. Audits are never perfect, but nothing that rose to this level. We've not had a suspension.
My question is, like, for the work that you're doing or under contract to do, would you be able to supply material from plants that are currently certified?
Right. We have four other asphalt plants that are certified in northern Indiana that can all reach Laporte County. And we fully intend to provide for the contract per specifications.
Now, one of the concerns that has come up is because of this audit not going well, there's like a cloud on this whole situation. So, what is it that you can do to assure our constituents that, let's say, if you utilize your mix and if you continue to do the work, that the work that you're doing is high-quality work? What is it that you can do to give us that confidence?
Right. We offered to have an outside firm do the testing of the hot mix as we produce it from the Laporte plant. We're also having, we've taken steps to bolster our lab in the Laporte area, so our quality control will be, much more attention will be paid to it. We'll have external auditing companies come in and audit the lab's record-keeping and documentation and make sure that everything is, you know, going forward, everything is correct.
So, this independent lab does the testing, will you bear the cost of that independent lab, the testing for INDOT?
Yes, we would.
And who will choose the independent lab? Can we choose the independent?
It would be up to you.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I have some questions. So, if the mix that INDOT used in the 2018 paving season came from Laporte's facility, and we use that same mix, and I would presume our mix was not, the mix on our roads was similar according to the specs that we have, so that means our roads are not done well from the 2018 paving cycle, would that be a fair assumption?
I wouldn't make that assumption because the Laporte plant ran many projects that were actually tested to a higher level, and we didn't have significant problems. In other words, there's nothing in the audit that points to problems with the, with the mix being out of spec. It's strictly a record-keeping, diary-keeping problem. I mean, you need to track your changes. When you make changes to the mix, they need to be documented, and that's, so it's a documentation problem. If you look at the sporting documents, it says exactly that.
Is there any other questions?
No questions, Mr. President. Is there anyone else from your company that would like to speak, or anyone else on this matter?
I think I was probably the best person to speak.
So, what's the pleasure? Shall we?
Mr. President, I move that we take this under advisement until we've had a chance to read and review all the documents and see if there's any other comments from either this provider or any other providers.
Well, if you have any questions, we're, you know, more than happy to meet with you and explain things.
Yeah, I'll second that. And what we'll, what we'll do is, we'll review all these documents, and we'll also discuss with our, our staff, and then we'll make some decisions. But at this time, we'll take it under advisement. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to comment at this time?
Hello, my name is Morgan Roke. I have some drainage issues in my residential property, in John Kind Park. It's got an urban drainage system there. I had talked to the Drainage Board, Mike Pollan, and he had recommended that I had come to the Commissioners' meeting, present you with my issues that I have. Any heavy rainfall we have, my backyard is flooding. I have pictures and also the geographical layout of the property I have. Right now, according to what I was told, I can go by the Common Enemy Law and kind of just backfill everything, but then I create more problems to my neighbors, and I don't necessarily want to do that. So, I'm trying to seek help on how to resolve the flooding issues that I'm having. It's not any, necessarily any heavy rainfall, but if, just if we get enough rain, it just all flows downhill. I got a four-foot difference from the lowest elevation to my house. So, it ponds up and they, goes out to the city drains or the community drain that we have, and then it's pumped to a retention pond. And that's not enough to keep up with any rainfall we have because the way that the layout is right now.
Now, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll speak to Mr. Pollan, and we'll, we'll come up with some solution for that, and we'll get in touch with you.
Okay, yeah. From him, I was told that this has been an ongoing issue for a lot of residents there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you may want to refer it as well to the surveyor, Mr. Hendricks, because he was involved three, four years ago in attempting.
He was, I remember that. As a matter of fact, I was intending to do that.
So, Diane did not get your information, so before you leave, if you could make sure she has your name, address, and phone.
Then we need to get this both to Mr. Pollan and to our surveyor, Mr. Hendricks. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Department of Comments.
Good evening, Bob Joke, Superintendent of Laporte County Highway.
Good evening.
I'm here to inform you about a grant that's available. It's a Volkswagen Diesel Grant. It's been brewing for a few years, coming to a head now. It's a replacement grant, so you have to forfeit the old vehicle to get the money for the new one. It's a 75-25 grant, 75 on our part. I don't have any numbers. I got some round numbers for you, but I did not advertise yet. I just want to get your approval to approach the council and see if we want to go for any part of this or not.
Is it a particular vehicle that you're replacing?
Dump trucks, snow piles, dump trucks. Yes, we have. Eighty percent of our fleet is in compliance, eligible for this grant. What it is, it's kind of like the clunker rule that was around years ago. They take and they destroy the motor. It's all about emissions, clean air. And they replace it with a new, modern diesel motor. So, I put together just a little package, just for starters, 10 trucks, four tans, six single axles. We can do that for just under $2 million, so that'd be a million and a half out of our pocket to get the half a million grants. That's just a starter. So, like I said, I don't want to see this grant come and grow, go without us even taking a swing at it, you know? So...
Are the vehicles that you're planning to replace, are they old? You have to replace some of them.
Yes, it's 92 to on up to 2012 or something like that. So, any vehicle in that period is eligible. Eighty percent of our fleet is in there. So, we wouldn't have any trouble coming up with that many trucks to replace. So, it's not like, you know, it's almost like a trade-in, you know? It's almost like a half a million dollar trade-in on those old trucks.
Depending upon the availability of funds, if the council were to choose not to utilize the entire amount, but even part of it to replace the real old ones.
Yeah, that's just a starting point, you know? And I know everybody's got a lot on their plate these days with funding and stuff. So, just, I don't want to go through all the motions, applying for the grant and all that, and then no funding. So, I just kind of want to see, get everybody's opinion, do we want to go for this or not? You know, if they decide, no, we don't want to go for none of it, I did my part.
So, Bob, I guess that my question would be, you know, the, the year that the truck is produced is not as important as the miles driven and the wear.
No, it's the year. It's, it's the year of the vehicle. It's anything before, I don't know why they started in 92, but that's what they did.
Yeah, okay.
To get these vehicles in compliance with the new emission rules, like the new truck by now.
Okay, so you're focusing on emissions, you really, so that's the purpose of the grant?
Yes, it's all about emissions, yeah. It's not mileage, no.
Okay.
I guess that's it. So, if I can get your permission to proceed with this to the council?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, anytime we can get 25% from the fence.
I know there's a lot more attractive grants out there, but that's what this one's offering, you know? It's all the, it's called the Volkswagen Diesel Grant. Volkswagen was fined billions of dollars years ago. Now, they divided it up, like California, they get a lot, they get a lot bigger piece of the pie than we do. I think 41 million was Indiana's cut, and they're going to dole it out in three different lettings, so...
Well, certainly improving the pollution in our county is a good, is a good thing. So, I think we, I think I would vote to proceed. Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And that being said, thank you. This paving issue, we'll choose an independent firm to do some testing?
I think what we'll do is, we'll review this, and then we'll, we'll get together and have our internal discussion, and then we'll, we'll come up with a plan.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and fellow citizens. My name is Joe Golick. I'm the County Veteran Service Officer, and I've been in this position for approximately two and a quarter years. I'd like to tell you my version of the show and tell. And I'd like to start with some old statistics first, because when you deal with a VA, that's what you get, are old statistics. So, one important one to bear in mind is I'm comparing 2016 to 2017 right now. In 2016, VA expenditures in this county was $34 million. In 2017, it increased to $35.6 million. It's important to bear in mind, too, that we started the part-time position in Michigan City in July of 2017. So, it's my, I already believe that it's paying dividends for the county. I mean, there's no doubt about it. They won't be publishing, VA won't be publishing any 2018 figures till later this month, possibly early June, but they're forthcoming. And I'm willing to venture and educate a guest that it's going to exceed the 35.6 that we did in 2017. Now, these are directly related to the county itself, and most of the funds are given to veterans in one form or another. Some of it's through medical, others are through pension or through disability payments. And those are directly related to county expenditures by the VA, which in turn, the veterans spend it more or less in the county. Not all of it, obviously, but quite a bit of it is local. So, if you bear those things in mind, I'll be updating that figure here as soon as the VA publishes that. To give you an idea of the Veterans Administration, it's split up into three behemoth agencies. One is the VHA, which is the Veterans Health Administration. Another one is the BBA, the Veterans Benefits Administration, and the NCA, which is the National Cemetery Administration. And through the course of any day, I deal with these agencies all day long. And they're getting better, but it's still a difficult process. VHA, for example, the Health Administration is further broken down to medical programs, prosthetic and sensory aids, mental health care, vocational and work assistance, long-term services, non-VA or community care, and caregiver programs. Now, that's just the health side. Now, we deal with the Veterans Benefit side. So, you have service connected disabilities, Volk Rehab, pension, education and training, home loan guarantees, life insurance, dependents and survivor benefits. The National Cemetery Administration are simply for burial and memorial benefits. It's a, it's a one-liner, but it's huge. I deal with it quite often, in fact, as recently today, I made arrangements for surviving spouses, the veteran, arranged for him to be interred in the Fort Custer Cemetery in Battle Creek. So, I'm going to share a little bit by way of metrics with you right now, and by no means is it going to be a complete set of data. There's a lot of other measurements and statistics that we go by, but here, I'm comparing something that I'm more responsible for, and I'm comparing 2018 to 2017 now. So, insofar as interviews, in 2017, there were 948 interviews that we did, and by "we", I mean myself and George Watkins, who was a part-timer in Michigan City for two days. Was one day for a while, but I appreciate the intervention there. And from 2017, 948 interviews, 2018, 1,451 interviews, 34.7% increase year over year. As far as claims, in 2017, there were 407. In 2018, there's 553, and that's a 26.4% increase. And we have a very good success rate of our claims going through. They're good claims. Information counseling, and these are in-house, they're not by phone, there were 583 in 2017, and 1,286 in 2018, a 54.7% increase. Telephone calls inbound, 2017, 1,0747. 2018, 2,0157, 19% increase. Outbound telephone, 2017 is 792, 2018 is 1,947, and that's a 59.3% increase. A lot of this had to do with outreach things that we were doing, too. So, you could readily see that the number of claims are going up. This did not include any of the veteran meetings attended, any powers of attorney filed, out-of-office interviews, mile travel, miles traveled, or any other things that we did. And believe me, there's quite a few things that we do. And one of the things that we did, and I wanted to bring this up today, is an article that I had prepared for the local newspaper, the News Dispatch. And it, it's fitting that we address it today because Saturday is Armed Forces Day, and that's honoring every member of the Armed Forces. A week from Monday is Memorial Day, and that's honoring our fallen veterans. So, this particular story I wrote for the News Dispatch, it involves one gentleman named Charles R. Barnthouse, and it's in memoriam. Now, read it as presented to the paper. By all accounts, Mr. Barnthouse lived a relative, lived in relative obscurity. He died alone in meager surroundings. He slept on the floor amid a handful of his possessions, which included a guitar, bicycle, and a card table. When Mr. Barnthouse passed away in Michigan City, in his Michigan City apartment on October 5th, 2018, it wasn't until about two days later that his body was discovered. The county coroner, Bob Cutler, asked questions of the neighbors and was given clues that Mr. Barnhouse served in the Armed Forces. His neighbors did not know him and had very little by way of personal encounters. Nothing more was known about him. Due to Bob Cutler's diligence and his desire to provide a proper burial for a possible veteran, I started a lengthy search to determine if Mr. Barnhouse was a veteran. What I eventually uncovered was astounding. Mr. Barnhouse was not an ordinary veteran. He was what's called a lifer. He served in the U.S. Navy from August of 1985 to July of 2005, and this qualified him for retirement from the Navy. Among his awards and commendations were the following: the Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Navy and Marine Defense Service Medal, Navy and Marine Corps Overseas Service Ribbon, Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, Southwest Asia Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal." Bob Cutler was able to, uh, or, I'm, I'm sorry, Bob Cutler was unable to identify a next of kin. I called VA's National Cemetery and arranged for interment of Mr. Barnhouse's cremated remains. Mr. Cutler and I selected the Abraham Lincoln National Cemetery in Alwood, Illinois, as the veteran's final resting place. The cemetery is a first-class institution, and everything that they did was performed with a high level of competence and professionalism. Bob and I transported the remains of Mr. Barnhouse to the cemetery on March twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen. We checked in to the admitting office and pulled out the vehicle in line. We were soon greeted by Ms. Dana Chisaric, a cemetery representative. She was driving the escort vehicle that took us to the area where the service was held, which included a recitation, a twenty-one gun salute, flag presentation, and even a bagpipe ceremony. What struck me was that Ms. Chisaric had a great deal of sympathy as she was made aware that Mr. Barnhouse had no known next of kin. She could not hold back her tears, and I was overcome with pride when I was presented the flag after it was folded, and I sincerely mean that. Dana signaled for a service truck to come over to the site of the cemetery, and we followed this truck to a columbarium section. Mr. Barnhouse's ashes were placed in a designated niche, and a temporary cover was screwed into place until the permanent niche plate was engraved and ready for placement. We placed three spent shell casings within the columbarium niche, while the other casings had been previously collected by the maintenance crew at the cemetery. The flag presented to me was donated back to the Abraham Lincoln National Cemetery, where it is flying today with honor in Mr. Barnhouse's name within the grounds of that cemetery. For those who have never seen the cemetery, it's a truly majestic place. With this, Mr. Barnhouse's niche plaque is appropriately engraved, Navy Veteran at Peace. This veteran died alone, but was not forgotten. I wanted to give special recognition to the Root Funeral Home, because they cremated, uh, Mr. Barnhouse at their own expense. And a special thanks to Ms. Diane Gonzalez, yes, you, in the Commissioner's Office for her research on the civilian side of things. So, to me, that was, uh, the great thing that, uh, one of the little things that we do, uh, as Veteran Service Officers, uh, and there's a lot of things that go on in that, uh, office that you would not believe, uh, we get involved in. One day I'll have to share all this stuff with you, but not today. And finally, I just wanna end this with, um, a memo that was faxed to me today, and it's, uh, called "Operation Stand Down," and it was, uh, it's, uh, being held at the Indiana University Northwest Dunes Medical Professional Building, thirty-four hundred Jefferson Street in Gary, Indiana. And this event is being held from, being held from oh eight, or eight AM to twelve PM noon, and it's sponsored by the Northwest Indiana Dental Society, and it's a dental screening, uh, which includes exams and x-rays. No treatment will be performed on-site the day of the screening. The veteran will be referred to a local dentist who will perform the necessary procedures at no cost. And I wanna emphasize, at no cost, this is being donated by the people of, uh, the dentists of predominantly Lake and Porter Counties. Veterans would need to bring in discharge papers and a driver's license, so DD two fourteen and a driver's license, or a veteran's ID card. The free screening is offered to veterans who live in Lake or Porter County, and I had them include Lepore County, uh, as soon as I got the note, so... They ask that you pre-screen, uh, to register at two one nine three one eight three seven nine eight, that's two one nine three one eight three seven nine eight, and it's called "Operation Stand Down," Friday, May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. With that...
Mr. Golick, thank you very much for that nice report from the BSO, and, uh, again, thank you, and, uh, County Coroner, Mr. Cutler is there in the back, Dan, for the work you did in this particular situation that was, uh, ni- nicely done, and to honor the memory.
I appreciate your saying so, Commissioner, and, uh, if it wasn't for Bob Cutler, I wouldn't even know this man existed, and, uh, it's just a pity that, uh, someone who devoted twenty years honorably in service, uh, had to go this way, but at least, in the end, he, uh, he was at peace.
Thank you, Mr. Golick, and thank you, Mr. Cutler. So, just before he, he, uh, we move on, um, you just gave a really good example of why these department head reports, um, can really serve a public, uh, public purpose. One of our goals is to be transparent and really share, um, the stories behind the work that all of us do, uh, for the county. So, you, you know, your, your department was sort of in the news about, uh, funding a while ago, but when you listen to your numbers and then follow it up with that very poignant story about a real, live person who lived in Lepore County and who served our country so honorably, you bring your work to life, and, um, every dollar that the, the taxpayers, um, do to support your work is certainly money well-spent when you consider the increase in the service that you've done for veterans who deserve our care, and also that poignant story, that alone, um, Mr. Cutler, thank you so much for what you've done, and, um, thank you, Mr. Golick, and...
Thank you.
And Diane, thank you.
Any other department heads?
Good evening, Steve.
Good evening. Steve Alt, Director of Lepore County nine one one. I wanna start with, uh, we had, we had a very successful dispatcher week, so thank you for your proclamation. Um, I wanna thank, not only did we get agencies that were, that are in public safety that recognize the dispatchers, but the public, and it was, I, from what I understand, it's been a long time since we've had that much recognition. Um, Blue Chip Casino, did, if I can single out one, they were very, they, they helped, they recognized us, Life Care Center in Michigan City, and it was a very successful week, so I'd like to publicly thank everyone for, uh, recognizing how hard those dispatchers work. Um, I'd like to also report that we have, uh, reorganized our training, we would like to thank Porter County once again, Renee Tomlinson, she, uh, was able to show us how they do their training there, and we've now implemented a structured training program that incur, incur, includes a orientation program. So, we're hoping with the, with new hires now, we'll have a structured training. We've also implemented quality assurance, and, uh, we are gonna be able to start QAing both fire, or all three fire EMS employees, we can QA both the nine one one calls and the dispatch itself, and that's, I'd like the public to know that as well, because they are always a lot of times calling, wanting to know if we are doing quality assurance, and we will be. We also, I also, on a side note, was able to discover that this will come to no additional cost, because our, I found out that our recording system has those kind of, that kind of, uh, documents for quality assurance, and they, they will randomly select calls for us, so that was good. Um, FOIA reports now, I'd like the public to know we have a FOIA request form in front of the door, we wanna keep that area secure, um, so our area, so we, they can pick that up, they fill out the form, and there is a drop-off mailbox for them to, uh, we put those requests in. Once those requests are approved, we also no longer will be allowing anyone to actually hand-deliver these requests. Those records now will be either emailed or mailed, depending on what the person prefers, the requester. I want the public to, um, know our Facebook and, and identify our Facebook page, we've, I've been working hard and trying to get our Facebook page out to the public to understand the systems, Lepore County, that we do have an informational Facebook page. Yes, we, we identify, dispatchers have done great work, but when there is such an emergency, such as a storm, a, um, who knows what could be, we are gonna put on our Facebook page, road closings, um, railroad crossings that are closed, we're gonna put that on the Facebook page, and the public can immediately see what might be going on or what might be closed in their area. Um, I've given permissions to, um, someone twenty-four seven to be able to maintain that Facebook page. I wanna recognize, uh, our dispatchers for the hard work they do, um, and I think they're a highly professional staff, so I'd like the public to recognize them, that I can't believe what a highly professional organization we have. Um, I'm asking the councils, or the commission's permission to go to the council to request two additional full-time staff. We had a hundred sixty-six thousand calls for service last year. The year before was a hundred forty-four.
Wow.
You go back fi- ten years, it was eighty-two. We have not had, we've actually lost through attrition some staff members, and, and these were, these employees do a wonderful job, and if you ask them tomorrow, would you like, you know, they'll say, "We'll do our job to the end, we don't need another person," but they need, they need help, they do need help, and I, and I put something on Facebook, I think that was saw about one day, where there was eighteen fire calls and, and three police calls, or three EMS calls all at the same time, or vice versa, they were, I'm sorry, they were handling three fires and eighteen EMS calls at one time. That was, that was really, it's difficult.
You know, we wanna make sure that they don't get burnt out, and that's very important, yep.
So, I'd like to ask your permission to approach council for that.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve, um, Mr. Alt's request to approach the council for, um, hiring two additional dispatchers, and certainly, I think that, um, your explanation of the increase in calls, um, attests to the need for this.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Are there any other department heads who'd like to comment at this time?
So, I also wanna mention that Mr. Alt has done a great job of using social media to, um, not only, um, applaud his, um, the, increase the morale in his, in his, um, department, but he also is using, uh, Facebook and other social media as a way to get the word, the word out, and I think you make a really good point about, um, using Facebook, you know, a lot of people waste time on Facebook, but it is a really good way to get, um, information out to the public quickly, so, um, appreciate all of the work you've done in kind of pushing the county forward, using technology and, and using that as a way to inform the public. So, I appreciate if everyone takes a look at your Facebook page, signs up and likes it, so that it's in your feed, and when you have, need information, a storm coming, a flood, all the things that happen in Lepore County, that we can use that as a way to get accurate and current information, so thank you for that.
All right. Are there any other department heads? Seeing none, we'll move forward, uh, to the requests. Uh, the first item on the agenda, consider permission to approach the council for matching FEMA grant funds, Jay Sullivan.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to, I guess, first, uh, get permission for the acceptance of the low bid for Bridge Thirty-four, and if that's accepted, then we can go before the council and ask permission before the council to match the grant funds.
I'll entertain a motion to, for him to approach the council.
So, before I, um, make a motion, so I see that, um, the, you're recommending acceptance of, um, Reeve Riley as the low bidder on Bridge Thirty-four?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, um, as you know from the previous discussion, there's been some concern about, um, and we took it under advisement, so could you explain the work that Reeve Riley would be doing on this project?
Um, there was a washout on, uh, on the, uh, Lepore County side of the bridge, it spans Lepore and St. Joseph County on eight hundred south, and the west side of the approach was washed out, and there's going to be, uh, we're redoing the design a little bit, we're taking out some of the polished tire that was there, and we're gonna just put in stone riprap, uh, fiber and, uh, mesh to hopefully, you know, a little, it's, the design's gonna be different, hopefully alleviate the flooding and, and, uh, loss issue we had. So Reeve Riley's gonna do that, um, and then there will be, uh, about four hundred and thirty feet of asphalt that will go on, you know, once they get, uh, the, uh, approach stabilized and the asphalt's top of it, and there will be about four hundred and thirty feet asphalt, that will be what Reeve Riley will have to, you know, get from another time.
Is there, is there any urgency to take action on this item today, because we have some information that we need to review?
No, um, there isn't, the bridge has been closed for a year. We do want to, um, get the bridge fixed this year, it's been done this summer, we will, you know, there's a possibility we could lose a FEMA fund, it is a seventy-five twenty-five matching grant, we're talking probably four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, with the grant money, it was five hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars to get the, the work done, so that'd be seventy-five percent, that would be paid by FEMA.
But two, a two-week delay would not harm the project?
Two-week delay's not gonna hurt anything.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Mr. President, I move that we, um, take this under advisement and, uh, reexamine it at our next meeting.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
But he also had, uh, permission to approach the council for matching FEMA grant funds, that's a separate item, huh?
Well, it would be a separate item, but depending on who we have then for the, the contractor, and we did have two bids for that bridge, so if we don't go with the low bid, then we, I'd have to, you know, approach the council.
So, both are related, the FEMA grant fund is for Bridge Thirty-four?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then we'll, uh, I'll consider that we'll take both those items under advisement, and we'll bring it back at the next, uh, next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, on the old business is consider Figma contract, Barb.
Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director, um, we are getting ready to begin the random drug screen program for county employees, and the contract you have before you is for us to begin that process with Figma. Figma is currently handling all of our pre-employment drug screens for all county employees, along with the random drug screen program for the Sheriff's Department and for the DOT employees out at the county highway, excuse me.
So, basically, are, are there, are there any changes from the previous contract, or is it more like an extension of what we had before?
It's more like an extension, because all the fees are staying the same.
Okay. So, any, any...
No, I, I think as Barb indicates, it's consistent with some of the prior contracts that have been approved for Figma, and we're comfortable recommending it to you.
Okay. Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider acceptance and signature of the low bidder small structure two one one zero on one fifty north, Mitch Bishop.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, this is, this, um, I'm coming for you for approval, uh, signed approval of the contract for structure twenty-one ten off of one fifty north, um, I believe in your February fifth meeting, the bids were open, I'm recommending the low bid be chosen, that's D and M excavating, they were over seventy thousand dollars under, second place bidder, which is Gary Up, construction, um, small structure replacement, um, approximately three months construction, maybe a little bit more, um, the road would have to be closed at one time, probably three to four weeks to replace that, and we'll probably start construction, uh, July first.
Okay. Any questions?
No, no questions.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second it, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In the old business, we had the item related to the Adult Protective Services.
It's right over there.
They were requesting, yeah, please go.
So, Mr. President, we added this to the agenda at, at the beginning of our meeting, uh, Adult Protective Services requesting permission to change the dollar amount for purchasing a leased vehicle from Enterprise. So, when Adult Protective Services was here at a, a previous meeting, they, we approved, uh, the purchase of a vehicle for seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eleven cents. When they returned, uh, to make the purchase, seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents was added, uh, so we are now asking, um, to change the amount to eight thousand zero four two and ten cents for the twenty seventeen Ford Fusion that was requested by Adult Protective Services. That's an increase of seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business, uh, and that's first, uh, item A is consideration and approval of findings of fact and conclusion of law in regard to vacation petition of Stephen M. Liskey and Natalie J. Shabbett, Andrew Volz.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioner Mathias, uh, got a call from, uh, Mr. Volz, he was not able to be here, I believe he has submitted, uh, from the Plan Commission, proposed findings, uh, that we don't anticipate any remonstrance, and there's not been any expressed to the Commissioner's Office, and so we're comfortable recommending approval on this, uh, particular vacation petition at this time.
So, should we see if anyone in the public wants to speak?
Is there anybody who wants to speak on this item? There's nobody here.
So, based on our lawyer's recommendation, Mr. President, I move to approve the certification of the, um, the previous findings of Lepore County. of the, the previous findings of La Porte County Plan Commission.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item B, under new businesses, consider engagement of Ice Miller as bond counsel for the Michigan City Courthouse project, bond financing.
Yes. Commissioners, as you recall, the county council has, has now approved and given the go-ahead to the Michigan City renovation project, the courthouse project. And so at this time, it's necessary to retain the professional team. It's gonna be required. In addition to bond counsel, we'll be coming to you with the engagement of Baker Tilly, the financial advisor at the next meeting. There will then be a competitive bid process for underwriters for this particular project. But I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Champion, who's a partner at the Indianapolis firm of Ice Miller. Ice Miller, as you know, had been previously involved in this project for over a year and a half. But this formal engagement then formalizes the, the process at this point. But we wanted to certainly introduce you to Mr. Champion at this time.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Champion?
I, I have very little comments. I see on the agenda you were expecting perhaps John Gregg, and I can say the good news is you don't get John Gregg tonight with a long story. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of Ice Miller. This is very important to us, and we look forward to working with you on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Certainly more succinct than Mr. President. Yes, exactly.
Thank you very much.
So I, I think it's important to note that this project has been in the works for a very long time, and Ice Miller has been with us throughout offering advice. So at this point, I think that the letter of engagement is certainly appropriate. Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back to Indianapolis. Next item on the agenda is consider complaint slash request from Fred Hartstock and his attorney, David Ambers, regarding road in Hudson Lake.
Good evening. Okay. May I approach you?
Yes, please.
My name is Dave Ambers. I'm an attorney here in La Porte with an office at six oh one State Street, Suite B. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Fred Hartstock, who is here and available to answer any of your questions. Mr. Hartstock owns property which abuts in the rear Sarah Lane in La Porte County, Indiana, out in Hudson Lake Beach. Unfortunately, Sarah Lane was never improved when the subdivision was originally developed, even though the road was approved and submitted on the county road plan. On a packet I've given you, the yellow line up and down is the unimproved portion of Sarah Lane that has brought us here tonight. Mr. Hartstock, in an effort to reach the rear of his property, had begun to clear some brush from within the easement area, not easement roadway, right-of-way area, and there were some complaints filed by the neighbors. If you look at page two of the submission I've given you, the cleared portion, which shows some tire tracks, is what Mr. Hartstock was clearing. Neighbors were then placing a barrel and a fence within the dedicated right-of-way, even though it's unimproved, to hinder Mr. Hartstock. If you look at number three, then eventually somebody from the county got involved, and they put signs up saying no trespassing, violators would be prosecuted, which quite frankly, under the law, isn't possible because that's a legal public right-of-way. You can't trespass on a legal public right-of-way. So the access was blocked, which brought this to my letter to Mr. Friedman, which I believe you have, in being invited to this meeting. If you flip to page four, one of the neighbors appears within the easement, or I keep wanting to call it easement right-of-way, has what was being used as a gun range on the public right-of-way, which certainly is an unsafe situation. If you go on then to page five, it's just another picture of the area that Mr. Hartstock, at his expense, I might add, has cleared. It shows you the type of brush he's clearing. There aren't any mammoth two-and-a-half-foot diameter trees on this. It's mostly scrub brush. Now, Mr. Hartstock, I've labeled his property on the right-hand side of Sarah Lane on page one, and he's down to, he advised me today, the dash line just before the southern boundary of his property. So he's cleared probably ninety-five percent of this area, wide enough to be able to access the back of his property. Given the manner in which his home was built, which was built long before Mr. Hartstock was probably alive, there's no convenient way to access the rear of his property without using Sarah Lane. Upon the neighbors complaining, Mr. Mazinski became involved and asked Mr. Hartstock to discuss the situation with the neighbors and try to come to some kind of a resolution with them, which quite frankly, I don't know that Mr. Mazinski can delegate the Commissioner's authority over roadways to citizens. So all Mr. Hartstock wants to do, he's gone as far as he'd like to go. Eventually, his money permits. He would like to add some gravel. He's willing to do it at his expense so he can access the rear of his property. So we're here today to ask you to have the county highway remove those signs and allow him to use what is a dedicated public right-of-way. It's just the developer, and it exists in many of the subdivisions in La Porte County. The developer never went to the next phase.
Thank you.
I'll be quiet for a minute, and you guys can ask questions.
Do you have any comments from the legal perspective?
Well, I think you'll want to hear, I think there are neighbors here as well that may be here to offer their opinion. And I think there is a, a department head or two who has weighed in and may want to put some information on the record as well. I believe Ms. Pollan has been involved with this, and I've got, and Mr. Hendricks, I think we can put his material in the record as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this issue? Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Dave Chahowski. I own ten lots, five on either side of Sarah Lane, and I have just a few comments. The property owner requesting the road development has the option to purchase two lots just north of his property to allow him access to the backyard. So that's certainly one option to consider. The road would only serve to accommodate the one homeowner who only represents four of the forty lots that abut the road. The majority of the other homeowners are not interested in the development or use of the road. It therefore, in effect, would become a private road for Mr. Hartstock to use. All the other homeowners, including the property owner requesting the road development, whose property owner's abut the gully or the road, have ample access to our properties via Vaughan Lane or Oriole or Aspen Lane, that area. In my opinion, making the additional property access and cost to the county unnecessary. The majority of the homeowners repurchased or inherited our properties with no expectation of that road being developed. On a personal note, my house was burglarized a couple of years ago. The burglars used that gully to get their truck out of normal sight, and I don't, again, developing that, in my opinion, would offer more opportunity for something like that. And then certainly with homeowners with many years of residency, it's not uncommon for to have our dogs, visitors, kids in, in our backyards. Adding vehicle traffic in and around our backyards, in my opinion, would create a potentially dangerous and unsafe hazard.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to comment on this issue?
Hello, I'm Scott Mojar, beside at seven-seven-six-three North Oriole Lane. Excuse my voice here. Yeah, this all happened on or about March twenty-sixth, approximately eight P.M. at night. Seen a tractor, the front loader, moving some personal items, personal property of my neighbor's. So I went over there, said, going over there, confronted him. I called the police today. I think there's something going on here. So the police come out, asked what the problem was. Mr. Hartstock claimed he had permission to clear this road, and I have pictures, can email you guys as well also. But he claimed he had permission to do this from Highway Department, your commission. So after that, we did our due diligence, started making calls, and found out he had no permission to do none of this. And, you know, didn't inform any of us what he was gonna do, basically, in our back doors, you know, at eight o'clock P.M. at night. So I'm under the thing, this is not big enough to develop as a road. I mean, it really, it's literally in our backyards. Like I said, we have kids, we got pets, we got grandkids. Basically, I gotta say, I don't think some of my other neighbors are gonna address you guys also.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Friedman, any?
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes. Go ahead.
My name is John McQuish, and I'm the deputy trustee in Hudson Township. I actually walked in the road. It was a little strange to have the no trespassing signs on what I knew to be county road. So I investigated this, and, and it's, there's a little hostility going on, as you may have noticed. But it is a county road, and it's going to be put to use to develop the property there. So, you know, that's something we need in our township, is to have the, the land and the improvements instituted. It's a fairly quiet neighborhood. There may have been a burglary. This may bring additional development to that particular parcel. I've never met the, the individual here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Diane Covelo. I live on the side. It's a very quiet neighborhood. It's sort of a dead-end road on both parts. It's quiet. We want to keep it that way. I feel by putting, opening up the easement, it's going to bring traffic, trouble, a hangout, and not good for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, excuse me, guys, forgot to add, as a group, we have obtained a lawyer, Anthony Novak, and it's our, we're gonna try to have that easement vacated. So.
Thank you.
Well, and that touches on one of the two options that Mr. Hendricks has presented, which is, yes, it's a dedicated but unimproved roadway, and typically, actions in a dedicated roadway still need to come to the commissioners for review in terms of public safety or convenience. Or you can have, you know, a Plan Commission petition to vacate and return each half to the adjoining landowners. But any working right-of-way, of course, is, is an issue before the, before the commission, which has jurisdiction. Mr. Hendricks had suggested potentially a hold harmless that could protect the county if, in fact, individuals wanted to improve the right-of-way with their own funds and labor, and that's separate issues. You may want to hold it over, perhaps, to the next meeting. I know Mr. Mazinski had some input on this. He'd probably want a vote and participation in it. We had information submitted by both Ms. Pollan, Mr. Hendricks, and Mr. Mazinski, and so perhaps you could take it. And I know you hate to add something else to take under advisement, but this may be prudent to at least consider holding over at that point.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Mathias, any?
That attorney wants?
Yeah, please go ahead.
To back up to some of the comments that were made, the folks every month traded, while I can be sympathetic with them, they bought the property knowing they were buying property along a dedicated public right-of-way. It would have been disclosed in their title policies when they bought their home. It's not an easement. It's a dedicated public right-of-way. It's simply unimproved. It would take all of the adjoining owners to consent to the vacation of that. And obviously, my client's not going to consent because he needs that, he depends upon that as a fruit of his property. I'm not gonna bore all you folks with the legal research, but I've given Mr. Friedman several cases back to the eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. This is all well-settled law, and the one I like the most says, once a highway, always a highway. And I've given not only some encyclopedia law, but case law to support our position to Mr. Friedman. So I think taking it under advisement may be a meeting with the parties would be a good idea, but I don't think it's something we can just summarily vacate. I think it's something we have to deal with going forward, is you ain't let him approve, improve it with a hold harmless agreement if he ever wants to put down the stone? Does the county maybe have some grindings that they could put down there? He's got it as wide as he really needs it. He's almost to the end, and maybe it's something where everybody can work together, where it becomes a win-win for everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
A question. I, I'm looking at the, the map out of Beacon, and I believe I know where his property is. Is that the only access to his property?
He fronts on the property, he fronts on another road. But given the way houses were built back when his was built, there's no way to effectively, like, repair a septic tank or do anything in the rear of his home without coming through the rear. It's built too close to the lot lines.
But he has access to his home from the other road, correct?
He can get to his home, yes, but he, that's, he has one, one of two accesses. He wants to use both accesses, which came with his home when he bought it.
Well, no, it didn't. I mean, it came with it as a public, public road, unimproved county road. So I'm unclear as to, I'm just gonna blurt it out. Somebody bulldozing a county road just as a citizen, I think that's unusual.
Should he have probably gotten permission? Yes, he didn't know that and thought he was doing the whole neighborhood a fire, favor.
You know, this, this seems like a neighborhood issue, and I would, I would suggest strongly that we figure out a way to have the neighbors sit down and talk to each other, because it sounds like, you know, the, the county owns the property, which means it's everybody's property. It's not just one person's. It's, it's everyone who pays taxes in this county.
That's not what the case law says. I don't want to argue with you. But that's, I gave Mr. Friedman a specific case on that. Nobody in this room owns that road. That road belongs to the public. It's a dedicated.
That's what I'm saying. It belongs to the public. It's a public, public piece of, owned by everyone in the public who.
It's a legal thing.
Okay.
I get what you're saying, but, and I'm not trying to be argumentative at all, man.
Sanders, so this is to access the back portion of the property?
Correct.
Can he access the back portion of his property through the front portion of his property?
Not feasibly. There's a small strip between his house and the neighbor's fence. I've seen a picture where he has like a small boat park there. It's only as wide as a boat, you know, less than the width of the table Mr. Friedman's sitting at. If he needs work on his septic, wanted to build a pool, anything like that, there's no way to get there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to take this under advisement.
So moved.
I'd second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item D, consider releasing rights of reversion for Phil East Business Center LLC property to permit transfer and property to go back on the tax rolls. Attorney Jim Kaminsky. Hello.
Good evening, commissioners. I, I represent Twelve East Business Center. I was retained about eighteen months ago regarding the sale, finally, of a part of the land owned by Twelve East Business Center to Green Acres LLC, which is a related entity of Pioneer Lumber. I believe Commissioner Mathias probably knows the history better than me, quite frankly, on this site, but to sum it up as briefly as I can, years ago, the Joe-Sam Foundry went into bankruptcy. When it went into bankruptcy, there were unpaid taxes on the real estate and a lot of other issues, not the least of which was severe environmental issues. So starting in about the year two thousand.
Nineteen ninety-seven, sir.
Thank you. I knew you would know better than I, so I should be careful.
This is our first big brownfield project in Michigan City, and yeah, I, I, this is a really great project, actually.
And it's a great story.
Yeah, it's a great story.
It really is. There were a variety of grants sought by, a variety of different agencies everywhere from the Northwest Indiana Forum to the city of Michigan City, to even NIPSCO being involved in the processes of trying to get the site clean and bring it back to market so it could be used as, through a tax-paying entity. Currently, the taxes on the site, there are no unpaid taxes that remain, but Twelve East Business is a not-for-profit entity whose job through the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation in the city of Michigan City was to not only oversee the cleanup of the site, but also to see that it was brought back to the tax rolls. The county took back the property because of the unpaid taxes, and that's what led to an agreement that was signed in the year two thousand, in which the county transferred the property to the not-for-profit entity that was a. property to the not-for-profit entity that was a successor to 12 East, which ultimately did oversee the environmental cleanup of the property, to the point where the IDEM has accepted a recorded restrictive covenant that allows now for the transfer of the land under certain restrictions, that basically potable water can't be used on the site, but it is approved for use for commercial and industrial purposes, not residential purposes. So, when I got involved, we had to go through the process to get that restrictive covenant accepted by IDEM, which it was done and recorded, and I provided that to Attorney Friedman. And last year, one of the grants was a brownfield grant that was administered through the department, and they reviewed the use of the funds and have accepted the use of the funds and forgave a loan that was given to the Michigan, city of Michigan City through that program. So we are at the point, and frankly, I didn't know personally a lot of the history. There have been a lot of turnover with representatives of the economic development corporations that have been involved, as well as the city of Michigan City. And when title work was run to sell two acres of the remaining eight acres of the parcel, a right of reversion showed up in favor of the county, and that's what led me to find out about this agreement from 2000, in which essentially the county said, "We have the right to take back this property if you, 12 East Business Center, don't do your job and see to it that remediation take place and it be brought back to the market." Attorney Barry McDonald from Michigan City has represented Green Acres and the Pioneer Lumber family, the Rackeys, and they've given me permission to state that their intention for this two-acre parcel that they, we intend to sell to the, to them, will in fact be used for an expansion of the business. So it's not only going to be brought back to the tax rolls, but you're going to actually see some expansion of the improvements right next door to it by the Pioneer Lumber Company. So it's a great story, and the intended use came, admittedly, it started when I probably had hair, but we're finally there. So we would appreciate the commissioner's support of rescinding the rights of reversion so we can move on with presenting clear title to Pioneer, to Green Acres LLC.
Mr. Friedman, any, any comments?
It's, as Mr. Kiminski indicated, and as Commissioner Mathias said, it's a win-win. There are no back taxes on this particular real estate. It's being sold to a for-profit entity for development, which means it'll be back on the tax rolls, and then the environmental remediation has been completed, leading to the recording of the restrictive covenant, which had been approved and requested by IDEM. So we're very comfortable recommending approval to you.
So, Mr. President, I would move to approve, but I have to make some comments, because this is a 22-year-old brownfield remediation project. Tony Rodriguez is in the audience. He was the chair, or the president of the EDC MC at the time, and I was the mayor. We took upon a, this was a 100-year-old site that had extreme contamination on it, and to think that over the last 22 years, not only has the remediation been done, but piece by piece with so many players, from, you know, the ones you mentioned, the Forum and NIPSCO and the MCEDC, the state, the feds through IDEM and Brownfield Task Force, this is a really great result. For 22 years of work, it could have gone south, and this is an example of how you take a really big community problem, and with hard work and dedication. I would love to read some of the names of the people who were involved, from John Lloyd to Chuck Oberly, Donna Ducharme, Kay Nelson, John Schaefer, Diane Thoman from NIPSCO, Tom Edwards, Al Wallace, Don Babcock, Jeff Jones, who doesn't even live here anymore, that's how long ago it was, Tony and John Regatz. It's just, it's a really huge success story. We're taking a property that could have sat there for another 100 years and turning it back into a tax-producing piece of land for the county and for the city of Michigan City, so, big win.
And yourself, Commissioner, too.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it wouldn't have been an easy task to put together, as I read the past documents.
Well, I, I got inspired, you know, I've always been an environmentalist, but I went to a conference, and they really, I did, I knew nothing about brownfield remediation, other than the fact that my community, when I was mayor, had lots of it, because across our region, we were an industrial powerhouse through the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, but it was dirty, dirty use, and so we have a lot of brownfields. And this is an example for the region in general to say, "Here's success, and here's how to make it happen." So, big kudos to all the players and across the region that have contributed to the success. So thanks so much. I move to approve.
I have a comment, Commissioner Mathias. The reason we waited for 22 years is because we wanted you to come back and be on this county commission when we do this.
Nice one, Dr. Cora.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item on the agenda is Consider Resolution Regarding Ways to Increase Convenience and Hassle-Free Access to Voters. Mr. Friedman?
Yes, commissioners, you had requested that we put together a proposed resolution to address some of the issues that you had raised, and Diane, read it, or one of you read it, if you would.
I'd be happy to read it. I think it's important to note that this isn't just a response to one or two or three community comments, but over time, our culture has changed. Courthouses used to be the center of communities. They were kind of the town hall. Everyone went to the courthouse for their business. They met at the courthouse. Courthouses didn't have metal detectors and sensors and officers with weapons to protect everyone. And the same with schools. Schools were always the safe place. They were the place where communities gathered and celebrated their children. They didn't have police officers, and they didn't have locked doors, and the concern for school security and the security of our children. Those are all things that have changed in the last couple of decades, and sad sign of the times, to be honest. But I think that we don't want to have any negative impact on voter turnout. When I looked at the 17% of LaPorte County voter turnout, that's pathetic. And from my perspective and the lens that I see, I think anything we can do to encourage civic engagement, encourage participation in the voting process is what we should do. And when I listen to people saying that it's a barrier, that they're, you know, the grandma who goes to the courthouse to get, to get her, you know, to practice her right to vote, 80 years old, she has to go through a metal detector, might have to get frisked, has to have a special kind of ID, she has to pass officers with weapons, that's, I'm not really sure that fits with what our founding fathers thought was, was appropriate. So I just think as a community and as a county, we need to examine what other communities have done and, and really consider it. So I'll read for the record the resolution that we've come up with, and certainly would look forward to anyone in the public who'd like to comment after I read it. So this is a resolution of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners regarding ways to increase convenience and hassle-free access for voters. Whereas Indiana voter turnout levels continue to be among the worst in the country, and whereas numerous impediments exist to greater voter participation, including the lack of same-day registration, no voting by mail other than absentee voting or electronic voting, and even the limited hours for voting in our state, which present challenges, and whereas most of the above-noted changes would have to be adopted at the state level, and we encourage our legislators to continue to look at methods that would increase voter participation. And whereas turnout in the most recent municipal primary election remained low, with one precinct in Michigan City having just 41 voters participate out of 823 voters who were registered, which amounts to a turnout of just under 5% in that particular precinct. And whereas this body and the LaPorte County Election Board can take some steps to ensure that voting, whether it is early voting or voting on election day, is as easy and hassle-free as possible. And whereas with security now required at schools that are also used as polling places, and such required posting of security outside the door of a polling place at schools can be a deterrent to some voters. And whereas having just two early voting locations in our county, both located inside the courthouses, require voters to go through security, potentially even subjecting voters to pat-down searches and temporary relinquishment of their cellphones, presents an additional hassle for those wishing to exercise this most basic and cherished freedom, the right to vote. And whereas former state representative Scott P. Laff first suggested additional early voting locations almost four years ago, and we believe it is time to implement such recommendations similar to the changes adopted across Indiana by Boone, Hamilton, Tippecanoe, and Monroe Counties, and others that have established additional early voting locations other than just at their courthouses. Now therefore be it resolved by the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners that, number one, we encourage the LaPorte County Election Board to locate polling places in settings other than schools, to avoid the unnecessary complication of security issues that attend to school locations, and we ask for cooperation from various businesses, governmental entities, and nonprofit partners to agree to help replace those school locations by offering their locations as prospective polling sites. Number two, we respectfully request the LaPorte County Election Board, with funding assistance if needed from the county council, to authorize and locate additional satellite early voting locations, such as public libraries or other settings, to permit easier hassle-free access for those wishing to cast an early vote. All of this resolved today. So, Mr. President, before I make a motion, perhaps you want to listen to members of the public?
Is there anybody from public who would like to comment on this resolution?
Good evening. Jim Kimmel, 1015 Southwestwood Drive, LaPorte, and I am currently the LaPorte County Democratic Chairman. Many of the items in the resolution are items that I brought before the election board in the last two years. I think our voting sites that we have are travesty. If we look at right now, what people in LaPorte had to go through to get to this courthouse in the last primary, with all the bridge construction going on, all the county employees looking for places to park, which is another issue we won't get into, but people had to park literally blocks away to get to the courthouse to vote. And then if they got there, they forgot to put their cellphone in their car, they were turned around. They will not keep their, their cellphones at the security checkpoint. They had to walk two blocks to get back. If that were me, I would just say the heck with it and go out about my business. With the upcoming construction proposed for the Michigan City courthouse, I see the same problems there. That potentially could, could be an issue. And then, once that's done at the courthouse, there's a possibility, understand, that the offices over on 8th Street may be closed and brought in there, and what limited parking there is at the courthouse is going to be even more limited. And then when you've got people who want to take up handicap parking places in front of the courthouse to campaign, I think that's another travesty, but we won't go there for that. I think we've got, we've got buildings in Michigan City and LaPorte that the election board should look at, i.e. Maple Lane Mall in Michigan City, that's been, or in LaPorte, rather, that's sitting there. Maybe something could be worked out there to use one of the empty areas in there for a place to poll. You've got Marquette Mall, the sitting idle, ample parking, no problems getting in and out of those areas. I know there's been issues, and I even suggested looking at the libraries, but in Michigan City, you got the issue with the library being right next door to the county courthouse, so again, you've got the problem with parking. The court, the public library in LaPorte is on Indiana Avenue and Maple or Harrison, whatever, very limited parking there as well. So I think the libraries may be a thought, but I think we're getting into very restricted parking there as well. That's why I'm suggesting the possibility of looking at Maple Lane Mall, Marquette Mall for the two bigger monopolist metropolitan areas in LaPorte County. You've also got libraries in LaCrosse, I believe. You've got public libraries in Wantotaw. You've got one in Rolling Prairie. You've got the one out on Johnson Road and 400 North. I think those areas should be looked at. Convenience is what we need to look at for people to be able to vote. We're trying to get our younger people to vote, and this is one thing I talked to the election board about. When you get the younger people down in the southern part of the county, LaCrosse even as well, those who go to South Central and that, by the time they get off of school, they can't get into LaPorte to vote. Some of them say, "Well, they can do it on a Saturday." Well, there's only two Saturdays to do that, and they may be having other jobs, they may be involved in sporting activities and that. So it's really kind of limited for them to take the bus home, get in their car, and try to get to LaPorte before polling places close, or before the sheriff's department writes them a ticket for speeding. So I think we need to look at possibilities of what can be done. I think some of those libraries that I just mentioned in the rural areas could possibly be looked at as staying open until 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock at night. They could also be looked at as maybe being open on Saturdays, which I think all of them are. I don't know any of the, of the libraries except possibly Michigan City that's open on Sunday, but I think a Sunday voting location would be phenomenal for our people who work some, say, five, six days a week, to let them have that opportunity to vote. 2020 is going to be a huge election, it should be, and we need to get as many voters out as we can to give them the opportunity to vote, and vote as conveniently as we can possibly make it for them. The one thing I also pointed out to Kathy Croweback, and this is something we're going to look at, or that she's going to look at for 2020, she needs to start doing that now because she's obviously going to have to fund it somehow. That's going to be generating funds from the county council, and she can't wait until too much longer. Her budget is presented, I believe, in August or September of this year. So somebody's got to start sitting down, doing some homework, seeing if that's the direction you want to go, and then find out what the funding's going to be, if they have the capabilities out there. For I know it was one of Sheila's projects, is the internet down there, is there capabilities for that? What do we have to do to get it on the table? But I think you're spot-on with looking for ways to get this out there throughout the county, and it's, we're antiquated. We are ancient, and I applaud you for, please get it out of the schools. There's no place for that in the schools, and the stuff that went on last week is just a perfect example. So I applaud you for taking these steps, and hope the election board will put their nose to the grindstone and get some stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment on this resolution? I have a couple of comments. I've always felt that our role is to empower people, and by encouraging participation, we empower people. And I think, and frankly, there's a quote, it was a nice quote, I've always quoted, "This participation is power," and we need to empower the people. So I think this is a great resolution, and I'll be definitely supporting this. But in addition to this, Shaw, I would like for us to look into what happens to voter turnout and voting in states where voting by mail is allowed. And if it is significantly high, I think we need to, if you can, we need to bring the resolution to this commission, and then we'll send it to the state, that we would like for the state to start adopting that.
Well, Dr., the states that have adopted voting by mail, such as Oregon and Washington, are all facing much higher turnout levels as a result of that, and you're right, it would have to be adopted by the state legislature, but this body has gone on record before with requesting change or modification by the state legislature. You certainly, you certainly could as well, and so we can, we can address that.
And after that, we'll try to find some sponsors who will introduce that legislation, because we need to be addressing the needs of the millennials. They, they look at life differently. Their, their schedules are different, both husband and wife work, and I think they have issues with children, you know, taking care of children and all. I think we need to make it as convenient as possible.
Agreed. And just for the record, we'll want to note, and I know it's the commission's intent, that this be bipartisan in effort, because in order for a change to be made for early voting sites, it's got to be a unanimous recommendation of the election board, bipartisan. So we're going to need both major parties participating, and we have every indication, both chairs feel strongly about encouraging participation. But I wanted to note for the record that the statute requires a unanimous vote of the election board before there are any early voting sites that are approved.
Thank you. Mr. President, before we move on, you talk about mail, vote by mail. So as you know, I lived in the state of Washington.
Oh, yes.
Where I gleefully received an envelope every time there was an election. It would arrive in your mailbox, and there it was. It was, it, people vote in Washington State because there is no excuse not to vote. You don't have to drive anywhere. You don't have to schedule it. You don't have to miss work. You don't have to get a babysitter. It's very convenient. The worry about fraud has been disproved as a, as a negative. It's, it is, it works, and I strongly encourage us to consider, how do we lobby our state legislators to have them consider ways to involve the public? And I think Shaw makes a good point. It isn't about which party you belong to. It's about the fact that this is America, and it is a, it is an honorable right that we, our forefathers and foremothers have fought for and struggled for. So it's, you look at countries around the world where people stand for hours and hours in line to just get something that we take for granted. So how do we make sure that our young people, as they're coming up, our millennials, as you talk about, how do we make sure that... you talk about, how do we make sure that as cultures change, we don't stick with the same old, same old, which doesn't, apparently doesn't seem to be working, since Indiana in particular has such low voter turnout, some of the lowest in the country.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution regarding ways to increase convenience and hassle-free access for voters in LaPorte County.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Consider Resolution to Establish a Process for Naming Bridges in LaPorte County for Those Who Have Demonstrated Service Above and Beyond.
So Shaw, would you like to?
You Commissioners had asked me to look at that because I think all three of you were very interested in the notion of recognizing citizens who've gone above and beyond giving service in particular in fields of endeavor, both living and deceased, and what ways there are to be able to recognize them. One of the things we've looked at is the amount of bridges that the county has that are in a numerical system required by the federal government, but there can be a secondary naming system. And Commissioners have offered a great suggestion in terms of how to gain input, and I'll let Commissioner Mathias address it.
So, thank you for that. We have almost 200 bridges in this county, and we have scores and scores and scores of people who, over LaPorte County's history, have contributed unbelievable effort, civic life, participation in making our county stronger and making our communities, helping communities develop in a wholesome and healthy way. So what we tried to do is come up with a concept, and it appears that it's something that we can work on. So I guess one of the things I would just like to read is the now-there for part of the resolution, because I think it's important. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of LaPorte County Commissioners that we hereby authorize a naming process for bridges in LaPorte County to recognize and honor in perpetuity the commitment and dedication of our fellow citizens who have given up themselves in one field of endeavor or another to LaPorte County's service above and beyond. And we will assign on our new website a link or page so that such nominations can be submitted by members of the public and then routed to the commission for formal naming and designation at public meetings with record then made of the naming in the county's inventory and appropriate signage affixed to a given bridge to recognize the formal naming. So I wanted to read that part because this isn't just a political thing. This is allowing the community to come forward. We're retooling our website, as I'll tell you about in just a few minutes. But one of the things that we're going to make sure we have in there is a place for the public to submit their suggested names of people who should be honored. I'm sure we'll get through our 200 bridges in no time flat because there's way more great human beings who've lived in our county or who currently live in our county who should be honored. But it's a, it's a first start, a start of, a way of protecting our heritage and honoring those who have given so much to our communities. But it will be a public process, and I think that's really important. We will take nominations through our website or through mail into the Commissioners' office or calls. And then the Commissioners will then review and make decisions based on the submissions. And we will begin the process of naming bridges should this resolution be adopted this evening.
Commissioners, I should note that I bumped into Fern Eddie Schultz, the county historian this weekend, who was very pleased to hear that you all were considering this. Fern Eddie Schultz was in a presentation for what is known as the Helen Wilk Award, a missionary from LaPorte, a Methodist missionary, who was one of the greats in terms of her work abroad. And this is one of the many LaPorte County citizens that Fern Eddie Schultz has prepared histories on. So she's looking forward to submitting nominations. Frankly, her concern has been that the county is only, you know, is known in many quarters only for Bill Gunnis. And she said, it's about time that there are many other distinguished citizens rather than the Bill Gunnis history that has been told, often told. But I think you're going to find a number of nominations coming in from Ms. Schultz because she's done some great histories, has have others at the, at the county museum.
That's wonderful. That's a great way to use the public talent and dedication of people who are, who know the history of our county so well. So that's, that's a great anecdote.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is the date change for our first meeting.
That's right. Thank you. Mr. President, at this time, I would like to approach the commission with a resolution to change the date of our July meeting. Our July meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 3rd, which is the day, obviously, before July 4th. We are going to move, suggest that we move our meeting to July 1st. It'll be Monday, July 1st at 10:00 a.m., the usual time, just earlier in the week, so that we can approve payroll and claims for the early part of July and handle any other community business that needs to be addressed.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now to the Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Mathias.
Okay. So I have a few things. The July meeting was one that's off the, so I wanted to mention two things. One is that we've talked about the broadband issue, and we've been having really productive broadband task force meetings. And I won't go into too much detail because a lot of it is highly technical and my people's eyes may glaze over. But what I really wanted to mention again tonight, we've extended the period for the survey. And we have a survey on the county's website. You can call Diane, she can mail it to you if you need it that way. What we are looking for is as much data as we can get from across the county. So even if you live in an area that has great internet, you live in LaPorte City, you've got Comcast, you live in Michigan City, you've got great internet, we still need data points. What we're trying to do is assess the suppliers, for one thing, but also the range of internet capacity across the county. So I encourage people, you need to do it not from your cellphone, but from your home computer. If you're at work, only one person at that particular location at work, it will work, and then it will shut you down because it will have used your IP address. So if you could, you know, from your, from your, this place of business is great if it's located in LaPorte County, but also your home, that's the first thing, it's on LaPorte County website. So please click on the link and go to that survey. The second thing is we're working on a website proposal. We're going to go to the county council with a proposal to reboot the very ancient website that the county currently has. We have found that even though it's a really old and clunky website, lots and lots and lots of citizens use it every month or try to use it. And so it comes up in a lot of conversations. Why is our website so, so clunky? It's so hard to find things? We have a proposal from some local companies that we're going to be reviewing. But in addition to that, we're going to create a survey, which will ask the citizens what they want on that, on their website. So what places do you use frequently? What information do you hope to get when you go to the website? So we make sure that we're real responsive to the needs of our community. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that we will announce shortly a date for a chat with the Commissioners. We're going to kind of take our show on the road. We have been struggling whether we should do a meeting somewhere other than just here, or should we just have a, an informal kind of a chat, town hall meeting format? So we discussed that today with our department heads, and I believe we're going to go with a chat with Commissioners. And department heads will be with us so they can answer specific questions, for example, about highway department issues or planning department issues. We'll announce a date and a time. We're hoping to get to South County where they often, it's a long haul to get here to a commission meeting. And so trying to make ourselves available, listen to people, and find out what's on their minds so that we can be responsive. So we'll give you more details as we set a date and a location that will be forthcoming. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I guess I have a few things. First of all, Commissioner Mathias has taken the leadership on this broadband issue. And I have had several patients who have told me during the conversation of the past one month how much they appreciate us taking this lead. And what I was surprised was, I was thinking that this broadband connectivity problem is like way down in the South County, but these are individuals who are just outside Michigan City, city limits, and who are having connectivity problems. So I think whatever work we can do in this respect will be greatly appreciated. We had a great department heads meeting today. We received a lot of input and also received a lot of information from them. We have a wonderful group of people who work for the county, and we are grateful to them for the work they do. Website, county website, work is going on, and Commissioner Mathias has been working on that. And we want to promote LaPorte County. I think that's, that's the goal. And also provide enough information for our constituents to get the information they need at the website. So that's work in progress. And lastly, we're going to be having a meeting with all the township trustees next month because they have some issues that are pertinent and relevant and important for them. And we want to make sure that we meet them, understand their needs and concerns, and address them. Lastly, we had this story about, about a veteran where we had our Veterans Officer and County Coroner Dan who helped recognize this veteran's accomplishment and honor him and also to recognize his contribution to our country. So we have, we have several events coming up for the Memorial Day weekend. So I'd like to encourage everybody to participate in that and have a good weekend, Memorial Day weekend, and look forward to the meeting on July 1st. All right. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.